Next item, please.
Next item is Union Leadership Commentary. This section of the Board of Education meeting is being added to further enhance the already strong commitment and longtime partnership between district administration and all bargaining units. Both instructional and non-instructional union members serve on a wide variety of standing and ad hoc committees that drive the working decision-making in the Dearborn Public Schools. In addition, administration meets monthly with the leadership team of all unions as well as a group meeting with union presidents. These meetings are not required but are an extension of the collaborative partnership that has long existed in the Dearborn Public Schools. This section will further enhance the commitment to valuing all suggestions, views, and opinions brought forth by all staff members in the district. And first we have the Dearborn Federation of School Employees with Mrs. Angie Lorenzetti, Ms. Donna Smith, and Mr. Kyle West. Did I say all your names right?
Yeah.
Good evening, President Moze, board members. Dr. Maleko, thank you for having us here tonight. I am speaking on behalf of the Dearborn Federation of School Employees, the DFSE, which represents all support staff across the district. We are proud of the work we do and the positive impact we have on the students every day. My name is Kyle West. I am Vice President of the DFSE, a skilled trades leader in the district, and a carpenter by trade. I am one of nineteen skilled trades professionals maintaining all thirty-four school buildings. We also have eleven grounds crew members who maintain outside areas and handle transfers. Together, we complete over five thousand one hundred work orders a year, not including emergencies or daily tasks. We take pride in keeping our schools safe and functional because we all know a well-maintained environment helps students learn. Thank you again for your time and continued support.
Hello, my name is Donna Smith, and I'm a union trustee for the DFSE. I started in the kitchen as a food service employee, and now I work as a special education paraprofessional at Esso Ford High School. I love my job, and I take pride in supporting students of all abilities each day. The almost three hundred paraprofessionals in Dearborn Public Schools are some of the most caring and hard-working people I have ever met. I say that not just as an employee, but as a mother of a special education student in this very district. Each night, I am able to sleep knowing that my daughter is in such loving hands, and I hope other parents feel the same, knowing that their child is also receiving the same loving care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Angie Lorenzetti, and I currently serve as a Sergeant at Arms for the DFSE. I've had the privilege of working in this district for over twenty-three years. I began my career in food service, then became a special ed parapro. Currently, I work as an instructional technician at Esso Ford High School. There are eight instructional technicians in our district, and through teamwork, each of us provides various types of support for our special ed students. My job is to assist students who may be struggling with specific subjects like math or English and tutoring them to pass their classes. Another tech will assist the student toward completion of their high school requirement and ultimately graduation. Throughout my journey in this district, I found my work deeply rewarding. I am passionate about helping students discover how they learn best and supporting them in reaching their goals. My work brings me great fulfillment. As a union officer, my belief is to ensure that every student and staff member has opportunity and support to reach their full potential. Thank you for your support, and have a good evening.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Very appreciated. Dr. Maleko, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just thank you. We appreciate you coming up and alrenee in the unions. We value all of our employees, and it takes all of our employees to ensure that our students get a high quality of education. Dearborn, one of largest employers in Wayne County, over two, twenty-four hundred employees. So, we appreciate the work you do, and thank you to all our employees in the district and DFSE.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next presentation is from the Dearborn Federation of Teachers, and Ms. Kathy Martin.
Hi, I know Teacher Appreciation Week is over, but I would like to pass out some pins to all concerned.
Thank you. We love our teachers.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
And secondly, I want to say thank you to the support staff. As a speech-language pathologist, I know that parapros are probably my number-one favorite people in the school, followed by secretaries and custodians. I have not had to deal with skilled trades, but I'm sure you guys have helped out in some way, too. So, you know, it takes a whole village to make everything work. So, I'm here to talk about the survey we did. If you recall, I was here last year with a similar survey, and we did it again this year. So, all right. I also want to take a moment to thank everyone who made Teacher Appreciation Special last week. I know a lot of building administrators, PTA, and just individual families went all out to make all of our teachers feel very, very special. So, thank you to those people. And, oh, these are the people we thank. Okay, so, we're looking at member satisfaction. We, this is how many people have worked in the district and how long they've been here? So, as you can see, a large portion has been here twenty-one years or more. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, twenty-one years or more, and at least worked in education, I'm sorry. Give me a second.
Take it.
And then the years in Dearborn is a large portion has been here more than twenty-one years, and years in education over twenty-one years as well. So, members really value the transparency. So, first, we looked at, asked some questions about the union and what they like from the union. So, over the last two weeks, we invited them to take our survey, and this helps us reflect on the effectiveness of building representation and the executive board. So, every building has a building rep, and then, you know, there's the elected board. So, it gives us insight as to how we are serving our members, and then it gives us insight as to how our members are feeling in the district. I want to highlight the positive feedback. There's a lot who had a strong sense of pride in their work, and they have a continued commitment to our students and our schools. There are several staff members who shared appreciation for their principals' leadership and support, and some reported feeling valued within their school communities. Educators were especially encouraged by recent gestures of appreciation from building administrators and families, which serve as important reminders of the impact they make each day. Survey data also provided valuable insight into how members perceive support across different levels of leadership. A strong majority, seventy-two to seventy-nine percent, go here, felt protected and well-represented by union leadership, including both the executive board and the building representatives. When it comes to building administration, sixty-four percent felt supported, respected, and heard, with an additional twenty-seven and a half percent feeling somewhat supported. However, perceptions of district-level leadership are more mixed. Only twenty-five point nine percent, all right, felt supported by central office, and just twenty-four point one percent feel the same about the board. Notably, fifty-four to sixty-one percent of respondents reported being unsure about whether they are supported, respected, and heard by the central office and the board, highlighting a need for greater engagement and clearer communication from district leadership. That said, the survey also surfaced important areas that need attention. Many educators feel that their professionalism is not fully recognized. Concerns were raised about micromanagement, excessive busy work, limited autonomy, and the lack of authentic staff input in decision-making processes. These issues have contributed to feelings of frustration, burnout, and a sense that their expertise is underrated. Experiences with building leadership were mixed. While some educators reported strong relationships with their principals, others noted challenges related to communication transparency and perceived favoritism. Working conditions were another concern. Many members expressed that while they're proud to be part of the district, their job satisfaction is declining. A recurring theme in the feedback was concern over student behavior. Staff shared frustration with inconsistent consequences for rule violations, chronic absenteeism, and a general lack of follow-through. In particular, there's significant concern about the lack of support for special education at the elementary level, both in terms of academic inclusion and behavior management. Additional concerns included the use of teacher absences to determine surplus staffing and a strong preference for absences to be treated as paid time off without requiring justification. There are some other issues that came up, but I would rather discuss those privately. So, maybe we can talk about that and Mr. Maleko, Dr. Maleko, when we have our meetings. Those are some things I'll discuss. The feedback, oh, this is, the feedback's not only valuable, it's necessary. Our educators are central to the success of our students and our schools, and their voices deserve to be at the heart of our district's decision-making. We must continue working together to build a culture where teachers feel respected, supported, and empowered to do their best work. So, right now, we are, one of the main things that people are here for, why people turned out, is because there's a lot of concern, we're coming up at the end of the year, this is when surplus starts to happen, and there is some fear of layoffs because of the cuts. I mean, we're hoping that doesn't happen this year, but we don't know what's going to happen in the future. And we now, for the past year, have had the ability to negotiate how layoff and surplus happens. We had that ability prior to 2012. There were some legislative changes at the state level in 2012 when that was taken out of our hands, and we were no longer able to negotiate it. Last year, we were able to win that back, and we've been doing that, negotiating with the district ever since, to try to come to a more equitable way for us to surplus or have layoffs. And right now, per board policy, layoffs and surpluses tend to happen, there are a couple of, like, they look at evaluations and those things, but usually, the bottom line comes down to absences. So, right now, teachers are allowed to have sixteen, no, fifteen absences over the course of two years without fear of being surplus or laid off. Surplus is when you are moved either from your building or from the subject that you teach to something else to make space. And this creates a lot of unease for a lot of teachers. Some of you are new board members, and some of you have been here before. I remember last year, and every year, at the end of the year, teachers come up speaking about how they were, they feel unfairly surplus because of absences. And many of these teachers are teachers who had health issues, didn't qualify for FMLA, or unfortunate life circumstances. I have not yet seen a teacher who's been impacted by this, who was using sick days because they wanted to. So, there are many factors that we can use to determine who gets surplus or laid off. And absences, many of us feel, are the most ineffective things that they can use. There's a list of other issues that you can look at a teacher for and say, hey, for this reason, we need to move you. And absences are not legitimate. So, if we can look at that and come up with a more fair and reasonable and beneficial-to-students and schools way to determine who gets surplus and laid off instead of looking at absences, that would really help teachers, because we have teachers coming to school sick for fear of hitting that limit, and that's just not effective.
Any questions?
I do.
Okay, so trustee Al-Jahmi, and then we'll have trustee Barry.
So, I'm trying to understand what surplus means and how it relates to absenteeism. So, is it moving them to another school? Is this to, what would it do if somebody has excessive absenteeism and they're considered surplus and moved to another school? Is that a form of punishment? What is it? I'm just trying to understand that.
I can probably clarify. So, the surplus is, let's just say you have a building, and I'll just use Building A, whatever, as an example. And let's say that, for example, student enrollment went down in that building, and this year, you have twenty-one teachers, but next year, because of the enrollment, you only have nineteen. You don't necessarily get laid off, but because there's not enough positions left in that building, you would get moved. So, there needs to be a formula developed to determine, prior to thirteen, it was seniority, and that's how it was in the contract. The law prohibited seniority in 2011. We negotiated in thirteen, the board at the time, I'm just going to say what it was, the initiative of the board, there was concerns of absenteeism in Superintendent Wiston going back in 2009, ten, eleven, and so that's why the direction was to go into board policy and play. So, this policy has been in place since 2013. It has not been used tremendous amount because we've generally had positive budgets. When I was HR, we had to use it between probably 2013 through 15, and then maybe here or there. We haven't had to use it much at all for layoffs in about ten years. I think that's now why, we are, I don't want to negotiate in the public, but we are open-minded to alternative formulas. I know that's a factor, so.
Thank you.
So, surpassing means you get transferred to another building?
Yeah. Yeah, it sounds like it's the first option, they're the first to be transferred.
Correct.
It's kind of a layoff, but more move to another building.
So, what you do is for a layoff, you have to look at the entire district staffing, and it's evaluations that are actually, it's employee, I think, the policy, it's got employee disciplinary evaluations. Now, the evaluation ratings have changed. It used to be highly effective, effective, so now you have effective. So, it is the ratings, then absences come in, I believe, shortly after the, they come in after, and then seniority is later in the.
Certification.
Oh, certification requirements. But we're open to, right now, it's in board policy. It's been there since 2013. We're open to, you know, negotiating different formulas, for sure.
Trustee Barry, you have a question?
Yes, well, comments. First, seniorities were used with Brian Wiston. I mean, excessive absences was, it's not the teachers using, or the employees using the sick days, it was teachers who were just, just for the heck of it, were taking days off. There's a half a day, instead of coming in for a half a day, they were just taking the whole day off. I haven't looked at the contract in a minute. You mentioned earlier, it's fifteen days over a two-year period?
Right now, yes. If you have, if you can take up to fifteen absences over two years, once you hit your sixteenth absence over two years, that's when you are, can potentially be surplused.
So, the formula doesn't kick in, so anyone below sixteen, the absence won't be a factor for them if they're below sixteen absences. It doesn't, it's not one of the rating factors over a two-year period. So, you would have to have number sixteen for that to come into play as a factor in layoff and recall.
So, if I'm a.
Or surplus, sorry.
So, if I'm a teacher, and I only used fourteen days over the last two years, that doesn't come in play if I'm.
Correct.
Surplused or what.
Doesn't have an impact.
Now, the fifteen days, that's in the contract.
No, it's not in the contract. That's board policy.
Board policy.
We, in 2012, that became basically a prohibited subject where we couldn't negotiate layoff and surplus language. So, it left, that was never in the contract, but then when it became board policy, that's what it became.
What is in a contract? How many sick days?
Contractually, we are entitled to thirteen sick days and two personal business days a year. And that was negotiated, and that is part of our compensation package. So, when you offer someone a job, you know, sometimes you can't offer them as much money as you can, as they deserve, then you'll say, okay, well, we'll give you sick days. We'll give, you give them non-monetary things to entice them to come.
I think that's what I was trying to wrap my head around. You negotiate for those thirteen plus two days.
Correct.
That's where fifteen came from. And I know, we all know a little bit about negotiations. When you negotiate, once you get something, you obviously gave something up. So, I don't want to jeopardize your, you know, your negotiations. I don't, you know, I'm just going to step back right now, but just keep that in mind moving forward. I know you guys are going to be, you two are going to be talking about this, so.
Well, the sick days are going to stay the same. Those are, those are in the contract.
Yeah.
What we are discussing is what criteria is used in order to determine who gets surplused and/or laid off?
I got that, yeah.
And.
So, I have a major health issue, and I use up all my sick days, and all of a sudden, it's like, you know, one of our colleagues here, something happened, personal life, and you have to take a couple more days. At that point, you get penalized.
If you use sixteen over two years.
That's what I'm saying. I really used up my sick days because I was in a hospital for two and a half weeks. I used up all my sick days, but then life happens, and, okay.
Well, if you're in a hospital for two and a half weeks, you can file for FMLA, and then it.
Bad example, I.
So, yeah.
If you qualify for FMLA.
You have serious health.
So, you have to be working for a year to have FMLA. You couldn't have had used FMLA in the past year, and you have to be a full-time employee to use FMLA. So, if you're point eight, point six, point five, you cannot use FMLA. And if you have two babies in a row, you can't use FMLA twice.
That was a bad example, Dr. Maleko. Let's go back into the classroom where parents, both parents work, their kids are sick, they send them to the classroom, and we know how that plays out. Guess who ends up getting sick?
Yep.
You know, the teacher, and it's up to, okay, anyways. Moving forward, I'm looking for more information from both of you. Thank you.
Trustees are?
So, first of all, Kathy, thank you for everything you do. Thanks to all, I see a bunch of teachers back there, too. Thank you for coming out. Oh, woo-hoo, yeah, woo-hoo. I've told the story a bunch of times about how two teachers, you know, two teachers sort of changed the direction of my life, and I'm forty-seven, and I'm still talking about it, so you have much more? Huh? Yeah, forty, sorry, forty-seven. I mean, look in thirty-seven, but still forty-seven, and so thank you for everything you do. So, let me get this straight, just so I understand. Your contract says that you get fifteen, well, a combination of thirteen, six days, six days and two, what'd you call them?
Personal business.
Personal business days, so that's fifteen days. You guys negotiated for that in lieu of more money.
Or whatever.
Whatever. And you get those per year, per school year. And however, if you take more than fifteen days over a two-year period, it could be used against you when they start looking to surplus people. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Did I get that right?
You did.
Did I get that?
Yes. So, the days that we have earned?
No, okay, I get it.
Yep.
So, did I get that right?
Correct.
Okay. It's a little confusing. Did, but I, did I get that right?
You did get it right.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question regarding the surveys that you've done. I know you've done the surveys before last year. Did you compare the results? Did you see improvements in some areas?
We did. I actually meant to do a slide, I wanted to do a slide that compared. I will say that the union satisfaction has actually increased this year by just a couple percentage points, and the satisfaction of, like, the building administration decreased a little bit this year. And I don't remember the data for the school board and the central office administration.
Was that with the similar number of participants? Because I see you put in, just one slide, the number who participated. I don't know if that was throughout the entire survey, the three-hundred-and-seventy-eight people, or, and when you're comparing things, they better be apples to apples and not apples to oranges. The last survey, I believe, was a little different than this one, so, and I don't know what your numbers were.
We had longer time to have the survey, so, no, there was a slightly larger sample size. However, if you look at surveys, anything between twenty and twenty-five percent is statistically significant for results, and we have about twenty-five percent respond rate on this one. So, and the way percentages work is, if you have a sample size that's statistically significant, you assume that it's going to be the same result even if it gets bigger.
But were the surveys the exact same survey?
It was, yeah, the questions were the same.
Okay.
So, going back to the negotiations, if you were to have changes to the board policy, then we would have to change our own policy, is that correct?
Yes, because, okay, so, and to trustees are, this is why it's complicated, because the legislature stepped in. That's why it's complicated, because prior to 2011, it was in the contract. So, they were aligned with the layoff and recall, and then, basically, the legislature came in and said you could not use seniority. It could be like a later factor. So, that's what's changed it. Now, we settled our contract prior to the legislature going back and eliminating the law. So, we had the contract settled, so that's why it's not in the contract, and we're trying to negotiate on the side. And we're open, we're open-minded, like I said, we're open-minded to ideas, and I appreciate your leadership, Kathy. I'm looking forward to the twenty-seventh. We have a teacher advisory committee, and I think, you know, one real positive I see in this was, you have some comments in here that, you know, members appreciated why they stay for pay and the contracts and healthcare, which I think is a positive, you know, and I think we sustain it, we don't have, you know, shortages and things like that.
Yeah.
So, we're open-minded, we're always looking for things. I think, you know, when that policy was put in, it was put in at a different time, and there were different things going on. So, we're open-minded to some shifts, and like trustee Barry said, you know, there's things we can, you know, on both sides, and we don't want to negotiate here, but it's kind of a give and take on all ends.
Trustees are?
So, so, also, if I understand this correctly, then, so you guys negotiated and currently are under contract where you get the thirteen plus two days a year, right? And this fifteen days, or sixteen days, we'll call it, is when you, when you can be, when it can be used against you in a surplus, sixteen days over a two-year period, that's a matter of board policy?
Yes.
Correct, yeah, by law.
Okay, so, I'm sorry?
It was by law because of 2011, it had to go into policy, it could not be part of the contract.
Okay, right, I understand. So, but putting into the board policy, we weren't legally required to put it, we were just.
You were. No, you were required by.
Back then, we were not anymore.
We had to have, we had to have some mechanism.
You didn't have to have sick days as part of it, though. It became board policy in determining who was surplus or laid off, and the district was able to decide the criteria for surplus and laid off.
Okay, Kathy, would it, could, are you saying, or, I guess both Kathy and Dr. Maleko, are you saying that if we wanted to as a board, we could eliminate that existing board policy now?
The board has, we have many policies that the board decides.
That's not, that's not what I asked.
You could eliminate any.
Legally, yes.
Yes.
We could eliminate that board policy now?
You have, you have the ability on any policies to eliminate, to add, to tweak. We have our process, we go through the board policy committee.
Is that, is a board policy created or modified or eliminated by a majority vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, eventually comes to the full board.
Okay. Thank you.
To be continued.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, for sharing that.
Thank you, Kathy.
Next item, please.
The next item, just to make.
Actually, before we move on to the next item, if I may, if there are no objections, move up citizen participation. So, I know we started late, and folks have been here for a while to address us.
Sure.
So, I'd like to move up citizen participation before special reports. So, if you want to read the.
Yes, and just to confirm, there's no other union leadership?
No, I believe we only had DFSE and DFT, so.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are assigned in by seven, ten p.m. or ten minutes before our meeting by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There's a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. Our first speaker is Aaron Tabor. Tabor, what'd you say?
Tabor.
Tabor. Aaron Tabor, who will be speaking to us about the surplus policy.
Thank you, thank you for moving it up, I appreciate that. My name is Aaron Tabor. I teach ninth grade English Language Arts at Fortson High School, and I love it, I'm very happy to be here. So, I'm here to urge you to remove attendance as a factor in determining surplus and layoff for teachers. I am personally not, I've been healthy the last two years, so I'm not personally worried about it right now, but I have a lot of colleagues who are, and they let me share some of their anecdotes. I have one colleague who came in sick last week after having food poisoning because she knew that that would put her on the, on the docket for potentially being surplused. I have another colleague who has been teaching in the district for fifteen years, and she needs to take a personal day next week to chaperone her kid's field trip. That's going to put her on that sixteen days to be surplused. I have another colleague who was surplus last year. She was in the district. I have another colleague who was surplus last year. She was in the district for 15 years. And she went through the process of getting permission to take a religious pilgrimage to Greece for Christian Orthodox Easter. So she went through the entire process. She was super excited and she went to Greece. And then not, not long after coming back, she was notified that because of that pilgrimage, she was now being surplus. And then we have another colleague who was surplus last year. He was at Fortson for six years. And he, I'm being told that he was being moved. He was told he had, quote, impeccable attendance. But he was, he was sick on one single professional development day and that made him need to move schools. We're talking about very dedicated teachers who know that they need to be in the classroom, who love their job and who know that students learn when they're in the classroom. And we shouldn't have to choose between getting our students sick and getting our colleagues sick and being worried about being surplus. I think we're most frustrated that these days are part of our compensation package. They're not extra, but we've already negotiated on these days. So it feels really frustrating to take days that have been negotiated for us and not being able to use them. And we encourage administrators to deal one-on-one with the teachers that might have excessive absences rather than dealing with 1,400 teachers and a blanket policy who are not having excessive absences. Thank you so much.
Thank you for addressing us. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Muna Mashrahi, here to talk to us about surpluses and layoffs.
Hello, my name is Muna Mashrahi. I'm a school psychologist in the district. So when our superintendent was in the classroom, as mentioned before, surplus and layoffs were based mainly on seniority and attendance was not used as a factor at all. But now surplus and layoff is mainly impacted by attendance. So I asked the superintendent and his leadership team, if it was good enough for you when you were in the classroom, then why isn't it good enough for us? If you deserve to prioritize your physical and mental health without punishment, then why don't we deserve the same, especially in a post-COVID era? If you were able to use your benefits package without surplus being held over your heads, then why don't you think that we deserve the same? The union isn't asking for seniority to be the sole factor for surplus and layoff, but we are asking for attendance to no longer be a factor. We are asking the district to honor the benefits package it provides members by not having strings attached to the use of their sick days, by not continuing to use a policy that disproportionately discriminates against women and those with health issues, by leading with empathy and compassion, just like you ask us to do every day for our students. We are asking you to no longer punish teachers for using their sick days because teachers need to prioritize their physical and mental health to be effective for our students. Healthy teachers means a healthy classroom environment, which is students first. So I ask the district, evaluate our impact, not our sick days. Thank you.
Okay, our next card comes from someone who does not want to speak to the board, but I'll summarize their comments. From Kirsten Steffow, did I say that right? Yes? Do the teachers know if I said that right? Yes? Okay. The comment is, as an educator who is a parent, the limitations on how many sick days care of family days or care of family days disproportionately affects parents of young children who need to be home when their children are sick. The next card from a community member who does not, who wants me to read it for them is from Joseph Sickener. Am I saying, is that person here?
Sickener.
I'm sorry?
Sickener.
Sickener. Okay, sorry if I don't get the handwriting perfect. No other job counts your sick days or funerals or emergencies against you. We have to work harder when we're sick. We are on the front lines every day getting in contact with diseases. Give us the days that are already ours. President Moser, that's all the cards we have.
Thank you very much. We do have a section here for board follow-up on previous citizen participation. Trustee Barry?
I guess my question is, Dr. Maliko, why, I guess, what would be the argument not to go back to seniority?
I mean, I can't, I need to think about that and get back to you in detail. I would just say, seniority, one of the reasons it was taken out was because there were other factors like evaluation. And what happened historically was, I'll just say why the law changed was because you may have had a more highly effective teacher that was getting laid off because of seniority when someone maybe was going through discipline or was like in our system, a Plan Three teacher. So that's where this law originated with the Michigan legislature. And that's why they kind of said seniority should be a later factor so it could, because it could be for performance. What Dearborn did at the time and hey, I'm open to, like I mentioned to Kathy and everyone, open to changes at the time. Attendance, I remember, and it was Brian Wiston with the board who were very concerned of attendance and that's why
When did the law change?
The law changed in 2011 and then it changed back in 2024.
Last year.
Just last year. So that's why it's fresh.
Okay.
So that 2000, that law, that policy has been
So when I get a phone call from a teacher earlier today and he or she claimed that we won't use seniority because the newer teachers make less money than the veteran teachers?
That had enough, the, the, the money had
Moving forward, as
I mean, we, you know, the last few years, we were dealing with a teacher shortage and we were given higher up in the scale.
I get that. I'm just sure that
Historically, it was, there were complaints, you know, not from Dearborn per se, but across the state of layoffs was happening to those who had gone through, you know, had multiple disciplines or, and that's why discipline's a factor or they had gone. And then you had a teacher that was highly effective, doing a great job. The kind of teachers that we all heard at the superintendent honors, like the teachers we have here. Some of them were getting laid off. And that was the time, if you remember, 2000, you know, when John Artist was here and then Brian, and the bottom fell out. That was when layoffs were happening. The, the contract, I think, was also broken with the layoff protocol because we were literally laying off and prior to me even being HR, and you might recall, 120 to 130 teachers a year. And we would call back because of what was in the contract with the seniority. And it was written to the point where you'd have to lay off these positions to give cushion so then you could go and select, you know, based on your seniority. So that time, because of the budget being bad, the economy tanked in 08, 09, we were looking at layoffs. The last time we probably had layoffs, may some of you can correct, may have been my last year in HR, I think, when, you know, a few. But the budget started getting better in 15. And so we haven't had to deal with it, which is why it's coming to headwind. And times are different. We're open to it. If it doesn't work, during COVID, you might recall, the board did put a temporary hold on this policy. So during COVID, the board took action under our recommendation through administration to actually, to suppress that policy during COVID. It kicks back in because, you know, now we're back to the formula coming in this year. But we're open to different ideas depending on the priority. I would still think that, you know, evaluation and performance is still important. Now, the factors have changed because we no longer have the highly effective. Now it's only a three-factor process.
There's no doubt in my mind, the last few years, maybe six, seven years, we've been very generous with our teachers. But now it's understandable, anxieties are high because what could happen?
Correct.
We know that, so.
That's why it's coming.
We always, we always want to do the right thing with our teachers, so all of our employees, but, okay.
We're open-minded and I know HR has told me, they're, you know, I don't want to negotiate in the public, but we, we're open-minded. Like you said, it's a give and take. You know, there's things, you know, as well, that we, we're here ultimately to protect the students. The one thing I will just say, again, we want to protect people who are sick, but I will just say, I go through the school improvement and I walk through the classrooms. And we have, we have good subs, but it is not the same quality of instruction for our students when we go through the classrooms with the subs. Now, we have some very good subs, but overall, as the shortages occur and the standard has, it, it is a detriment to our students because the great teachers that do our work when they're there, the students are getting a higher quality of instruction, which is why it was initially brought in way back. So there's two factors back in 2011, I think, two. One was budget, but the other one was the quality of instruction. I look at the equality of instruction as a higher, in my mind, I'm okay with spending extra budget. But then, you know, making sure we have high-quality teachers. We get a shortage. And that was the other complaint. We get complaints with, you know, now we also have paid higher for our substitutes. So we're getting a little better as well. So we're doing better there. And I think Kathy brought the data of, you know, compensation is better. But that is a factor when I walk through the classrooms, you know, it's not the same quality. And we hear from parents that say, well, what happened? Why do I have a substitute for so long? So that's the other factor that we're dealing with. I think we're open-minded. We need to get to the drawing board and support our teachers. But understand there's some history here as to why we, we have this policy and it's been in place for many years.
Sure, sure. No, we were
It's a complicated issue.
I mean, we always say parents send their kids to school when they're sick. Last thing I want to, last thing I think we all want to see is if a teacher's not feeling well, but she's got to come into work or he's got to come into work, that's the last thing we want to see, so.
So maybe the formula needs to change. It's outdated and it needs to be looked at and maybe there's something else that could be part of it, you know? We're at that time.
Trustees are, you have a question for one of the speakers?
Yeah, Ms. Tabor and Ms. Mashrahi, could both of you, or either of you come back up for one second? I just have a quick little follow-up question and it, and it's going to be really quick and I can only give you like 30 seconds to answer it. So please just answer. Why, what is so bad about, I mean, a surplus just means you're moving to a different building. What is so bad about a surplus? Why wouldn't a teacher, just so we can all hear it for the community? Why wouldn't a teacher want to be surplus? You're not getting, you're not going to get paid less. You're not going to, like, why wouldn't a teacher want to be surplus and just deal with that?
Well, a lot of our teachers, especially if you've been in the building for a while, you've built relationships with the families. You've built relationships with your colleagues. You, you know, at the elementary level, there's a lot of material. There's a lot of time that you've, you've put into your classrooms. And to be uprooted, it's like somebody, you know, evicting you out of your home. Like, you know, it's devastating to be, to leave your, now, like, from the physical standpoint, you have to pack all that stuff up. You have to leave. But from the emotional standpoint, you've made connections with the community that's at that building with the students and the families. And you're losing that and now you're, you're being moved. And for it to be based on sick days, based on using days that are in our benefits package.
Sure, I get that. I just wanted to hear why it was bad. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Tabor?
No, just at all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Well, Dr. Maliko, we do have a direction for negotiations. Attendance is important, but definitely it's something that could be negotiated with the
I think there could be different formulas that, you know, just like what we did with the, in change, maybe changing orders and other ideas we can come up with together. And I look forward to working with Kathy and like I said, I think we've built good relationships where we work together. We have different, she's, you know, defending her members and we respect her teachers. And we're trying, like I said, we have the parents and we have other, and our students. And I know everyone cares about the students. So I think together, because we have great union relationships, we sit down, we talk, we brainstorm and we solve things. And that's what we'll do, so.